Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask our seat to hold.
Councilmember Gelderlos, Maryka, Norhut, Steenstra, Truus, Vanderwall, and Mirmas.
Uh, Councilman Gelderlos has been, uh, has asked to be excused tonight. Is there a motion to excuse Randy tonight?
So who?
Support.
All those in favor, please say yes. And the opposition, please say no. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Luis Sines from Granville Jensen Congregational Church for the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I didn't invite you to stay. And after the invocation has been called out, we'll call him to the witness. Pastor Walter.
Thank you, sir. Let's all pray together. Heavenly Father and God, we come together this evening as a family and community to praise you for who you are and to thank you for your endless and countless blessings that you have given to us and to our city. Lord, please watch over all of the many people who work diligently to maintain and improve Granville. Shelter our police and fire department and all of our first responders with your shield of courage. Send your Holy Spirit to fill the minds of our educators and business leaders with a thirst for truth and justice. Guide our houses of worship to share your truths with others. And Father, we ask that you bless our mayor and council members with a passion for stewardship in their hearts, a spirit of camaraderie as they work together, and a mindset guided by the command you have given us, and a genuine love for the work that they do. And Lord, let all of those who work to guide and protect all of us feel the appreciation and respect that we have for them. Keep them safe, keep them healthy, and grant them peace. In Jesus' most holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Pastor, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, sir. I'd stayed longer, but the Tigers are on.
Well, tonight, you have the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So, support.
Motion, support, and discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Great. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, July 28th. Had a chance to review those. So, motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Motion and support. Any comments, corrections, anything that somebody wants to point out? And if not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Right. I think this is the biggest amount of bills I've ever seen in the last 28 years. So, but there's a lot going on, but I said that last week, but there's really a lot going on. So tell us about the bills tonight.
Sure, I'm gonna start with the old fiscal year bills. What you can actually see is it's a relatively small number of checks, but a relatively large number. Uh, and that is really emphasized by the two bills I have to point out this evening. The first one being the invoice to Blackhold Transport in the amount of $988,782.67. As you all are probably aware, this is the full invoice for the 2025 street overlay projects that were approved earlier in the year. We're doing a lot of roadwork across town, and what that equals is a pretty big invoice. Um, and just would like to, to call out too, that, you know, Blackhold was not a contractor that we'd seen bid the last few years, so it was nice to get them in the mix, and they did a really nice job for us on those overlay projects. So, just a relatively large invoice there, you know. Also invoice in the amount of $385,725.78 to Reek Riley, another road construction company. This one was for the 44th Street resurfacing. But I do just wanna highlight, um, that that invoice, after this meeting, assuming we get everything approved as necessary, we actually need to move that to the new fiscal year, um, 'cause that work was conducted in July. So, doesn't change the total amount for this evening, but just please be aware for our bookkeeping purposes, um, we're gonna move that to, uh, new fiscal year, just 'cause of when the work took place. That's the appropriate place to put that. So, that's the only two I really have to highlight up for, uh, old fiscal year, 'cause as you can tell, you can buy those two invoices up, it makes up a, a pretty large percentage of those.
Okay, great. Uh, when I was in college, I see a lot, most of it is probably repaving and asphalt. And when I was in college, I worked for an asphalt company, so helped put me through college. I appreciate asphalt. But as I'm sure you know, as elected local official, there's nothing more beautiful than fresh relayed asphalt. So, very excited about that. All right. Any questions for Griffin on the old or new year, or fiscal year bills? If not, we'll do the old fiscal year first, in the amount of $1,480,197.62. So, motion to approve?
So move.
Support. Yeah, support. Thank you. Any final comments or questions? Not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryka?
Yes.
Shnorhut?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes. Anything on the new fiscal year?
Not too many to highlight that are particularly interesting on the new fiscal year. I'll point out a couple. Most of these were relatively small or relatively standard. Um, one was from the City of Walker, invoiced in the amount of $26,428. Uh, just as a friendly reminder, that's our, our monthly IT services contract, so we, we split IT services with the City of Walker. Uh, invoice in the amount of $5,700 to, uh, Hoonhorst Concrete Inc. I'm sure I butchered that, so I'm sorry. Uh, that was some concrete repair that we had done on Wilson's south of Ivan Rest. And then lastly, a larger-than-normal Warren-Bourging engineering bill in the amount of $21,712. We have been having them do some extra work, particularly related to pre-engineering for some of the future water main projects that are planned. Um, there's a certain level of work that needs to be, uh, performed as we're finalizing the amount that we're going to look to bond for. Um, so they just had to do a little bit more than normal for us, so that's why that invoice may seem a little bit higher. Um, but other than that, happy to speak to any of the other invoices if there are questions.
You pronounced Hoonhorst perfectly, by the way.
Thank you.
Exactly how you said it. Any questions for Griffin on any of the bills for the new fiscal year? Okay, is there a motion to approve those bills in the amount of $158,586.19?
So move.
Motion?
Support.
Yeah, support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norhut?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes. Well, tonight, under presentations, we have a presentation I've been looking forward to, and that is from Moxie Development. And I see Trevor Petrollia is here along with this, uh, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember your name.
Oh.
Kirk, so tell us about, uh, your project. Yeah, tell us the project here in.
Do you use any counsel? How are you? Do you have the PowerPoint that you can put up so I can walk through that as we go? I'm Trevor Petrollia. I'm a Hudsonville resident. My wife grew up in Granville, two blocks from Steenstra's, so very familiar with the area. Grew up going to Steenstra's and everything in that strip with my grandma, so very familiar. Um, we are proposing a 28-unit mixed-use project at Fayette and Maple. It's a .6-acre site that's currently owned by the DDA. Um, we have gone through with Griffin and Theresa and the DDA, um, since about October, November of last year, of working on this project to get it to this point. Um, you can see the existing site. It's a parking lot right across from Rainbow Grill. Um, the, the building is a 9,500-square-foot footprint, three-story wood construction. Um, the first floor will be, um, have residential units, and then in the northern corner, so if you go back to that site plan, so this is a site plan, so, um, I'm trying to see. This side is closest to Chicago Drive and obviously Maple. So, this corner of the building will be, um, commercial space slash community mini-space. There's about 1,900 square feet there. Um, we've talked to the Granville Jensen Chamber of Commerce as a potential tenant or a co-work space or additional type users, a small insurance office, um, something of those, along those uses, low-impact, low-parking, just due to, um, the site and kind of being off of Chicago Drive. Um, we have 39 onsite spaces. The units will be 14-one-bed, 14-two-bed. Um, and the project itself is, uh, right around $7 million in cost. Um, as we've been working through this, you can kind of see the information here. Six of the units will be had, uh, held at an 85% area mean income as far as rental. Um, we are working through with a PA 210 tax abatement, and then, um, the new, uh, state legislation revised the housing TIF, uh, into including rent capture. So we are working through that with, um, the Brownfield, Granville BRA, and then also Mishda as well. Um, you can see some of the renderings on this slide showing the building. Um, you can see down in the, in the bottom picture on the left side there is kind of the commercial space. Um, these were the, uh, kind of preliminary renderings. We're still working through these as we get through our construction documents. The plan would be that, uh, we get through all our approvals or, or site plan approved through Planning Commission. Um, the DDA and BRA, we met with them about two weeks ago to go through the PA 210 and then the Brownfield portions. Um, we are, we submitted to MEDC for a GRAP grant in February, and we're waiting on our LOI for that. Um, the schedule will be probably a Q4 of this year or Q1 of next year's start with turnover and leasing to start about nine to 10 months after that. So, we recently, uh, completed a project, uh, last month, July 2. We got our CFO in Hudsonville. This is Prospect Flats in downtown Hudsonville, uh, 41 units. It's two buildings. Um, you can see the exterior, the community, uh, fitness center, and then, um, one of the kitchens in the unit, and then the bottom right corner is the community kind of co, uh, co-working lounge space. Um, that project, like I said, was finished July 2, and we are, uh, have 21 of the 41 units leased as of today. Um, so very similar rent range. We plan on 1,450 to 1,600 for the one-beds, and 1,750 to about 1,950 for the two-bed Happy to answer any questions anyone has as well.
Questions for Trevor?
Yeah. So, the design layout would be very similar to the Hudsonville?
Yes. So we are actually taking, uh, you can see in the top right corner, that, the bigger building, we're taking that identical building with some smaller tweaks, but that is the same building that will be put on the Fayette and Maple site.
Okay. Would also have the common space, the fitness center and the?
Yeah, there will be 1,900 square feet of between community, uh, co-work space and then the commercial space. So depending on how much the tenant wants that we end up securing, will dictate how much of that 19 is for the commercial tenant versus the remaining square footage for the community spaces.
That's on the first floor, then?
Yep, first floor. Um, I have, uh...
Probably the biggest difference while Trevor's grabbing his things is, yeah, upper right-hand side, um, the, uh, outside facade will look a little bit different, more to match our downtown, um, feel. That was something that was discussed a lot with the DDA. Um, and then, believe it or not, that parking lot, um, uh, at 366 Fayette is not very level. There's actually a pretty substantial grade difference if you walk it.
Yep.
So the other, the other biggest difference to kind of notice there is where that's all built on, uh, a level grade. There would be...
Actually, so the Fayette site falls off about six feet from the south to the north. The big building here in Hudsonville at Prospect Flats falls off nine feet from the east side to the west side of the site.
Oh, right.
So there is two steps in that building similar to what we will have here in Granville.
Okay.
Yep. So, you can see the towers where the entrances are. Those each have a foot-and-a-half elevation change as you go up towards 32nd Hudsonville.
So the only other context I could provide if I, if I can, Mr. Mayor, is, um, you know, it's been really exciting in the short time, you know, I've got to be here with the city to, to work on this project. You know, my understanding is, um, the downtown and the DDA have been working really hard over the last handful of years to try to recruit new mixed-use development into the downtown.
Yeah.
And to be willing to, you know, consider the sale of a DDA-owned property, um, to help get some say in what they're attracting down there, working with a local developer who's executed very similar project before, has a level of investment in these communities. It's just really exciting, um, to see a project like this move forward that checks so many of these boxes. On a little bit more of a, I guess, timeline or, or kind of procedural step, just so you know where we're all at with the project, is, um, Moxie entered into a development agreement with the DDA in February, and that agreement really sets the framework for selling of that property, um, to be redeveloped into this three-story mixed, um, uh, mixed-use building. That agreement also has, um, some protections for the city as well as, uh, the developer to allow them to go through these due diligence processes prior to closing on the property. 'Cause clearly, at the end of the day, the city doesn't want to close on the property if the desired project can't move forward, just like the developer doesn't want to close on the property if they're ultimately not going to be able to build, uh, the project they've been talking about. So Trevor talked quite a bit about, uh, bringing apartments to the downtown, which is something the DDA's been talking a lot about. These are gonna be living spaces for people to be able to get down there year-round, create and, um, build on that active environment that I know Theresa and the DDA have been working on, support the businesses and the restaurants, um, that are down there, and hopefully be a catalyst for, um, some additional, uh, redevelopment in terms of that downtown Chicago Drive stretch. So, he mentioned site plan was approved, uh, by the Planning Commission in April. Total investment, excuse me, is expected to be about $7 million. But to make this project happen, Moxie is seeking tax increment financing, uh, to offset some of the eligible, uh, activities on the property, and the site qualifies under that Act 381 Housing Property, uh, Housing TIF program. So, with all of that, the first step in the process, um, for the city council was, I really wanted you to have an opportunity to hear from Trevor, who's been a great partner throughout this process. Get a chance to engage with him, answer, um, or ask any questions you all may have, but understanding that the net, what the next steps look like. Um, on the consent agenda this evening is to set the public hearing on the Brownfield plan. That would then be brought back to you all for public hearing and consideration in September. Um, because we wanted to start with kind of the broader view of what is this project, we didn't include the whole Brownfield plan in this packet at this time, uh, but please know, over the next month, obviously, that will be included in the packet when we have the public hearing. But I'm happy to sit down with any of you. Trevor and his team have also offered, be happy to sit down if you want to talk, uh, about kind of any level of the specifics. But in general, they are seeking, uh, TIF over, uh, a 20-year period of reimbursement. But I also want to recognize that what that's gonna look like is pairing, uh, a PA 210 abatement, which would be for the first 10 years, which restricts the amount of TIF that would be captured. It would then, over the second 10 years, reimburse the developer for the eligible costs, creating this, uh, this stack of incentives that is really being used around the state now to make a lot of these projects possible. So, with all that being said, city staffs can work in partnership with the city attorney and Moxie to prepare these, uh, these, uh, relevant documents. Um, those are what will be brought at the next meeting. Um, but to date, uh, Planning Commission has approved and received recommendations from the DDA and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So, just want to give you all a chance to interact with Trevor and his team and ask any questions, and then just please know, over the next month, between now and the public hearing, happy to engage as much or as little as you all would like.
Theresa, as director of the DDA, director, any comment you'd like to make? I'm sure, you know, will help this issue divorce quite a few more times, but anything just initially that you'd like to add?
The DDA is really excited about this project. We have been flying this for several years. Um, as director for the last two and a half years, I've been hitting the pavement, trying at talking to developers, leading them through the downtown. Um, I think the one thing that has become very clear to me in this process is that without offering incentives like these, I could do this for 10 years, and we're not going to get anything. Um, I've, I've walked through less than five developers through the downtown, had coffee, had conversations. Every single one says, "This is an amazing downtown. The location is right for development." Um, but we have not been able to make anything stick. Um, having Griffin here has been amazing in his knowledge of this. Um, so the DDA is excited. The DDA wants to move forward with this project. Um, I've learned a lot in the last six months, and I think the hope is that in doing this, if this goes through, that it will spur additional development. Um, our goal is a viable downtown and a town that is busy all of the time and not so much heavily relying on the events, but just that it's a vibrant downtown all the time and not only during event times, so.
JR, you or Carolyn from Planning Commission perspective, do you have anything you'd like to add now?
Yeah, when these plans got passed down from me from Paul, it's like, "I've seen this, we've talked about it, and I walked in with you guys. This is fantastic. This is great. Planning Commission kind of went over a lot of this with a fine-tooth comb." Uh, I think we actually made some different, uh, signing material recommendations, uh, you know, our experts on our, our planning commission. Carolyn, anything you want to add to that?
Uh, adding from a planning commission perspective, uh, yeah, we too are excited to see it, and it's been pleasant working with Moxie. Speaking of, from the Brownfield redevelopment piece, uh, it was, we went over it with a fine-tooth comb. I am not the expert, but a couple of members of the committee were, and they asked some really pertinent questions, which was like, "Oh, okay." Uh, but we're excited, um, both fronts.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, if you need anything.
Any other questions for Trevor?
Uh, no, I just have a comment. I, I love the appearance. I love the project, you know, the, the commercial corner, the housing.
Good.
Two thumbs up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if anyone ever needs anything or would like a tour of the Hudsonville property, I'm more than happy to, to give a tour, personal tour, so. Awesome. Thank you guys very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Time for public comment. Anybody here like to address the council? Please just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Anybody? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's a number of things here. There is a police and treasurers report for July, Planning Commission minutes, and one is, as well as the DDA minutes. Um, as Griffin mentioned, uh, the consent agenda would set the public hearing on the Brownfield, uh, redevelopment plan for the project, and that would be on September 8 at 7:00 PM. Before I get, turn it over to Griffin, 'cause he would like to talk about some of the proposed purchases. Just wanna, um, say I really appreciated the police report, and when I read through it, I thought, "Wow, they had a busy month." And then I kept reading, and it was. It was actually the busiest, most numbered calls that in recorded history, so, I don't know. You see that as a long-term trend, or?
Well, as long as the weather's hot, we're busy.
Uh, yes. Seems to be that.
Yeah, it's pretty stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and like I said, um, Griffin would like to talk about some of the purchase orders. So, approval of the consent agenda would be in the best interest of the city because of the purchase, uh, orders that he's gonna be talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to take a minute. I, I try not to elongate the consent agenda more than necessary, but obviously, we're at that time in the year where we just got a lot of purchase orders, um, coming before you all, and, you know, a lot of, of projects to try to keep moving. So, just wanted to highlight a couple things. Um, first off, you'll see City Hall carpet, miscellaneous office furniture, and, um, some renovations to develop a mayor's office. These are three of the major steps that we talked about during budgeting of where we can refresh City Hall for, uh, much more affordable cost than needing to do a, a full-scale renovation. Uh, feeling really good, got several prices for carpet. Um, I know Charlie worked really hard to also find a carpet company and a carpet style that we'll be able to use again in the upcoming years, 'cause again, we're gonna do kind of a phased refresh. So, the fact that we're not doing it all in one year, we wanted to be intentional about making sure, uh, we have a company we can, we can go back to. Um, mayor's office, we were very pleased to see that, that, uh, quotes for that came in substantially under what we originally budgeted. Um, office furniture, would just like to point out, this is the same company that was used last year when we purchased, uh, some miscellaneous office furniture, my office, uh, for example. So there will be a level of, uh, consistency there, but also just want to point out that that office furniture company, uh, does sell us at the NI deals prices, um, which is why those were not bid out. Um, the sidewalk plow is another item that, uh, we only got one quote for, but I just wanted to point out the reasoning for that was because this is the same type of plow that we have been using, I think, for 30 or 40 years in the city, and we've only really had to have three of them. So there's a, a level of trust, consistency, but also reliability with that equipment, which is why it's the, the one that's being recommended, even though there were not multiple quotes for different types of, uh, um, different variations, let's say. Uh, and then the fire station insulation, just wanted to bring up, 'cause I think I'm learning, like many of you, uh, the fire station is just the gift that keeps giving. And, um, this was one of those projects we talked a little bit about, uh, when we were discussing all of those change orders. And at the time, we determined to wait on the insulation to see if the new ceiling, uh, was going to hold in the heat that was necessary. Um, after this winter, our team over there was still telling us that a few of those offices just aren't maintaining the heat level they need to. Um, so, one, that's why we're suggesting we move forward with this project, but we're also suggesting that we, um, and the reason why we don't have multiple, uh, bids there is that we go back to DCI, who was the contractor who did the work, um, the full renovation of, of the fire station. Um, candidly, with the history that we've had in that, that, uh, building, having a contractor who has some experience with the building, um, they did a nice job on the project before, and they're standing behind their work. We feel like that's in the best interest than going out and maybe trying to get a low bidder who may not do as good of a job. Just with the number of issues we've had with that property already, um, I think our team is just confident that that is what's in the city's best interest. But like anything, um, obviously, if council feels different, we're happy to, to have more discussions. So, um, happy to answer any questions about anything on the consent agenda.
I did notice, uh, on the five purchase orders, four of them were substantially under the, uh, what I heard, and one was like $1,600, so that was very favorable.
Yeah, in, in general, stuff's trending pretty good. It's tough, you know, when you go through the budget process, sometimes some things you can get really after it, and some other things change a lot, but, yeah, I think we're feeling pretty good about the, the numbers we've been getting recently.
Questions for Griffin on any of those items? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So move.
Support. Motion, support? Any other final comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truus?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
Norhut?
Yes.
And Mirmas?
Yes. Griffin, some city managers' report.
Yes.
A few items.
Yeah, a few items and a, a few more purchases, 'cause again, it's, it's that time of the year. Uh, first one is, uh, in regard to, uh, the bids that were received for the Cemetery Service Bridge. Um, you will see that we received a fair number of, uh, bids for that project. Um, ultimately, um, we are recommending moving forward with the low-bidder Riverworks Construction. Um, this was the same company, uh, that did a lot of the work at, uh, Heritage Park, um, and we had really good luck with them, so the fact that they're the low bidder and it's a reputable contractor, we're feeling really good about that, uh, bid. It did come in, uh, notably under budget, which was good. Um, and again, as, just to make sure we're talking about the same bridge, 'cause I know I've gotten flipped around a couple times, we are talking about, uh, the Service Bridge that was acquired, uh, as part of the 3408 34th Street property acquisition and split and sale a handful of years ago. Um, so finally make that one, um, uh, updated and passable and eventually be able to promote more activity on the property the city owns on the south of the cemetery.
Questions for Griffin on that bid, please?
I'm very excited that it's the same company that fixed, uh, the deck at Heritage Park, 'cause that's beautiful.
Okay. Is there a motion to enter into the contract with, uh, Riverworks Construction for rehabilitation of the bridge, uh, south of the cemetery property in the amount of $85,210?
Uh huh.
Motion?
Support.
Support. Other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truss.
Yes.
VanderWaal.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Norhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Musk.
Yes. Thank you, Charlie, for getting those bids, it's, they're very widely, didn't they?
They were.
Interesting.
The next item we have is a communications planning proposal, so again, as a little bit of background, you know, improving the city of Grandville's communication efforts was one of the items identified and discussed in quite a bit of detail during our priority setting workshop back in January. As a first step, city staff is recommending engaging SABO PR to help us develop a mini communications plan and crisis communications plan to help guide future decision-making regarding organizational communications. SABO PR is a West Michigan firm with extensive experience supporting local governments. Candidly, this is the firm that almost all of our partners in West Michigan are working with, they have really developed a niche when it comes to municipal government communications, and I feel strongly that they would be a good partner for us at this point in our process of trying to figure out where we want to go with communications. I know they've helped several other Greater Grand Rapids area municipalities kind of start where we are and develop communications programs, so it's recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to move forward with the attached proposal. Obviously, that's going to be a process in terms of communications that many of us will be involved in, so I'm happy to discuss more if you all are interested.
Questions for Griffin? So there's a couple items on there. One is the smaller amount, I believe, was for...
The communication, the mini-communication strategy.
Right, and then the larger one was crisis communication.
So my suggestion, and again, completely up to you all, is because how they're going to charge us is ultimately hourly, so they kind of gave us ranges for the various plans. The city council, the budget that was adopted by the city council included $30,000 for communication planning efforts this year, so doing both of these, even if you consider the higher end of them in terms of the amount of hours, would be under budget, so my suggestion is just for the city council to authorize us moving forward with that proposal, and then we will work with them from there. I do anticipate council having a level of involvement, particularly with some of our communications planning efforts, but ultimately, these also being tools to help inform us moving forward when we obviously have to have some budgeting conversations about where we want to go, what we want to do, kind of the who, how, where, why of communications.
Well, my understanding is, I mean, years ago, was City Wyoming in particular was very happy with the work that they had done.
I think if you look, let me make sure they put it in here, but I think, yes, if you look at page five of their proposal, it's a list of various municipalities they work with, and kind of off the top of my head, I mean, I know they've worked with Wyoming, East Green Rapids, Kentwood, Cascade, Plainfield, Lowell, I mean, again, half if not more of the municipalities in Kent County, so I think they're just, they're my recommendation of who we would work with.
Questions for Griffin? Josh?
Yeah, I think this is good, I like the detail that's in here of all the different things that they could offer, because the thought that this would be kind of like a charge for, done as a retainer, you know, if there are things that come up, like the crisis communication, obviously, if there's no crisis, we wouldn't need to engage them necessarily, or would there be a level of cost involved in just having them on a retainer? And then the communication plan stuff, I would imagine there's certain things, I think we've talked a little bit about that, that we might anticipate, like the newsletters on here, for example, or some other things, you know, city communications, that we would kind of anticipate sort of handing over to them and having them get involved with, you know, as kind of a, yes, we're planning on you doing this specific work for us.
I think you are one step ahead of where we may eventually go. The first step that I'm suggesting is we do these planning exercises with them where we can get professional advice on how to start thinking about, when we say we want to be better at communications, communicating what, to whom, how, and get some advice there. The crisis communication side, clearly by the price you can tell, is a more engaged process, a little deeper dive into specific scenario response planning. What would come out of this proposal is actually two documents, two plans, but those plans are what we could use to then have the conversations here, particularly the first one, the communication strategy of, okay, now that we've put a plan in place of what we want to do communications-wise, is this something we can handle in-house? Is this something we need to consider adding staff for? Is this something that we really liked working with them, and they have the capacity, and they can give us a retainer amount moving forward, and we decide to start working with them? I think all of those are real options, but I think it's hard to, like we talked about during strategic planning, like explore those different ways if we don't first go, what do we mean when we say we want to be better at communications? Are we prioritizing newsletters, this, that, because candidly, we can't do everything, so I think that's why this planning process is kind of my recommended first step of, to set us up for success, to then have the conversation of, okay, now we're all kind of on the same page of where we want to go, now let's talk about how we want to actually implement that.
So our first step is to identify this company, is here's who we'd like to work with, here's the stuff that they can offer as far as services, and then we have further conversation about whether or not we actually want them to work on those.
Yeah, the first, yeah, that's a good question, I'm sorry if I'm not being, the first step is the proposal to do the planning exercises. I included their kind of brochure that highlights all the additional stuff they do in there too, really as justification for why I'm recommending we work with them, but yes, I mean, there are lots of different things that I think they could do to help us, but I think the first step is getting their professional support to get where we want to go better defined, and then we can have that conversation is, are we going there with them, are we going there with somebody else, are we going to try to do it in-house, and kind of from there? If we don't have the base, the plan, the infrastructure in place first, I don't think it's going to do us a lot of good having those next conversations if we're not all kind of united on what level of service are we looking for? Are we wanting them to manage our newsletter? Are we wanting them to come in and just do specific project-based stuff? Those types of conversations, I think we need to have upfront as a team with their support before going to the level of, can we handle this in-house? Do we want to add an FTE? Do we want to partner with Walker? Do we want to hire a PR firm? I think my vision is we do this fiscal year, give us a base, and then as we get into the upcoming budget process, which, believe it or not, will be here before we know it, we will have, we will be in a better place to have that conversation about where we want to go moving forward. Sorry, that was one.
No, that's good, that's helpful. And will this also include like DDA communications?
Yes, the DDA is all part of our organization, so yes, they guess.
That was included in the scope of, that was, okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Griffin? Okay, if not, is there a motion to authorize a city manager to move forward with that be attached with the proposal from SABO PR?
Support.
Motion and support. Questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember VanderWaal.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Norhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truss.
Yes.
And Mayor Musk.
Yes.
The last action item I have for you all this evening is a draft exercise equipment usage policy, so to support employee health and wellness and to build on another one of the priorities that council identified during our strategic planning, which was kind of employee retention planning. That's really, I guess, the angle I'm trying to come at from this is, I would like for our organization to consider starting to provide access to some limited exercise equipment for employees. We have identified a location in the basement of the fire station. This is a topic that, my understanding, has been discussed internally for many years, and for a variety of different reasons, just never rose to the level of being implemented, but it was really eye-opening to me over the last year, how many of our staff, particularly our public safety, both fire and police personnel, this is something that's really important to them. Also was made aware that this is a very common practice for other local governments in West Michigan, so it's a benefit that they are looking for us to consider implementing. The proposed policy, which I think was one of the original sticking points in terms of kind of the liability and safety and how we make this work piece, was developed over the past several months in consultation with our department heads, our insurance carrier, and our legal counsel, to make sure we were getting the necessary perspectives to obviously put an appropriate policy in place, but ultimately, looking for you all to consider the adoption of a policy and to authorize us to implement this exercise equipment usage program. The fiscal year budget, we did include a small amount to implement this program, you know, with the understanding that we're never going to be a total gym, or whatever some of the brand names are, that's not what we're intending to compete with. If that's something our employees want, it's obviously something everyone has the right to go to, but to put a limited exercise facility that would be available to our team is something that we would also look for consideration, assuming you all are comfortable with the policy. Would also be looking this evening for you all to authorize the purchase order that is attached for that initial equipment. Please understand that some of the conversations we've been having have gone something along the lines of, if this is something we're going to implement, our team needs to understand we don't get to go back to council every year and ask for more money for different equipment, that this is something that, you know, I really see as a low-hanging fruit item that we can provide to our employees, that is something they're really looking for, at what I see as a relatively low cost. The last item I would throw out that is probably more in the weeds than you all care about, but they did do quite a bit of shopping around with our team when we were exploring putting this together, to try to figure out how to get the best bang for our buck, and it is not reflected in the quotes you all have, but Dick's Sports did offer, because of it's the police and fire department personnel are part of this, a 20% discount on the items, so that's not reflected in the quotes, so ultimately, it would be about 20% less than that, but feel like for a relatively low amount, we can implement something that our team seems to really want, something that's common for other organizations in our area to offer, and feel good that we've put a policy in place that would do that appropriately if it's something you all would consider. So happy to answer any questions.
I think it's great, I, thank you, I mean, obviously, somebody spent a lot of time working on a policy, I read through it, it looks good, it addresses some concerns, so thank you for the love of all of the work. Other thoughts, JR?
This may just be some logistics, but the access in eligibility area, where it says use is permitted between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. For non-public safety personnel, so maybe folks that work here at City Hall, that's great, you want to come in at 6:00 o'clock before your work day starts, that's great. Says for public safety personnel, use is permitted while on duty. Is that while on duty between 6:00 and 10:00, because I know we have a lot of folks that work overnight, can they go to the gym at 2:00 AM? Or is that not a thing?
That is not a thing, and the reason for that, I'm going to hit on kind of two of those points you mentioned that I think is really important. So for non-public safety personnel, use would be limited to outside of work hours. For public safety personnel, the policy would give the discretion to the department heads for the chiefs to put appropriate policies in place. I'm going to reference a fire department, for example, they work 24-hour shifts, it is not uncommon for them to not only have access to facilities, but actually to have mandatory minimums in terms of their shifts to be getting some level of physical exercise. The limits on the hours was one of the compromises that needed to get worked through, that I think was part of the reason this didn't move forward sooner, because it would be located in the basement of the fire station, and we have staff work 24-hour shifts over there, we had to carve out certain hours where those staff would not be disrupted should other people want to use that, so it provides some opportunity for even our night shift police, for example, to use the exercise facility, but obviously, they have to be, understand that outside of the approved hours, it's not because we don't want people to use it, it's because we made a staff that's trying to get sleep over at the fire station, so.
Well done, perhaps.
Well, it is actually, people of them, so that's exactly, you know, was part of the compromise, and, you know, I think that's another one that's important for me to, you know, kind of call out to all of you. The conversations we've been having with our team are that this is a privilege, this isn't a right, and that, you know, things like that, what I really, what I'm really not, what I'm really not going to be okay with is, this is something you all want, I'm happy to advocate on your behalf, confident it's something council, you know, is willing to consider in terms of supporting our employees, but if this becomes more of a hassle than a benefit, we can take it away. And I mean that in the sense of, what I don't want is for something like this to become drama in terms of, well, they get to use it and I didn't, or this shift or that, this is, this is a, this is a benefit, a privilege, not a, not a right.
You sound like me talking to my kids.
I'm going to take that as a good thing, but I don't mean that to be, to be, maybe not coming outright, but it's just, you know, I think this is one of those things that's a really cool, good thing we can do, and just understand that, you know, kind of the same thing with equipment. Yep, it may not have everything everybody wants, but guess what? It's something everyone's been wanting, something is better than nothing, my famous line of progress over perfection, right?
Thank you.
So you're looking for the purchase order and adopting the person out of the policy as well?
Yeah, if council is comfortable with this being implemented, I would ask council to consider adopting the policy, and if you put the policy in place, then I would ask that you would approve the purchase order.
Josh?
Couple good questions.
Yes.
I'm assuming we have appropriate, like shower-changing locker room facilities over there for men and women?
They do have locker rooms over there for men and women with showers. At this point in time, we haven't had a lot of conversation about whether that's something, you know, people would be using for people working on shift, for example, they obviously have access to those, but for people, you know, before or after work, I don't know why they couldn't use them, but that's a conversation that we may have to work through. The bigger one we've worked to is an access, in terms of key card access over there, so that's something we'll coordinate with, as I'm sure you noticed in the policy, we will require everyone to sign a pretty strong liability waiver, or liability release waiver, so we're going to know who is allowed to be over there and make sure they have access, so that's something we can talk through.
Just to make sure there is, you know, equal facilities and access to facilities.
We do, we do have men and women's locker rooms at the fire station.
My other question is going to be about liability, but I think you answered it in strong enough language, and whatever they're inside or what's in here, that, you know, you're using it at your own risk, you know, it assumes that there's no liability for the city or whatever, you know, you're using this kind of voluntarily and all that.
Yes, yes, we do, yep, we, again, developed this in partnership with both our insurance provider and our labor council, to try to put as much protection in place for us as possible. Again, I'll always be kind of as upfront with you all as I can. Does that eliminate all risk? Of course not, there's going to be a risk in anything we do. I'm comfortable that there's more benefit that would come from this than risk, but I think that's obviously another one of those items, that if we put this in place and for whatever reason find that it's not working and causing more problems than it's solving, we can always consider it again, but to your question, yes, I think we have as strong of a policy and a liability waiver as we reasonably can.
It is nice to be able to offer something like this.
We have a lot of people who I think are quite excited.
Any other comments or questions? Not, is there a motion to approve the personnel policy regarding exercise equipment? You said just outlined by Griffin.
Support.
Motion and support. Josh? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Yes.
Norhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truss.
Yes.
VanderWaal.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. General, is there a motion to approve the purchase order in the best interest of the city? With R E P Fitness, Dick's Sport, in the amount of $4,647.3.
Minus 20%, so moved.
Okay. Motion?
Support.
And support. Other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Norhut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truss.
Yes.
VanderWaal.
Yes.
Maryga.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
The only other item I wanted to bring up for the city council this evening is just a little bit of an update on the water project bonding process that we have been working on. So coming up at the next meeting, Bond Council, Sue Wangarden, is planning to attend to review a bond authorization resolution with all of you. We will also at that meeting have a presentation from a company called Aetna who provides our water meters. They're also going to come in and give an overview of the first part of kind of those phased water projects, which is the transition of water meters to the AMI meters. The goal is very much to be able to start projects spring of '26. Obviously, with the decision that council made regarding water rates. We're not trying to drag our feet in terms of putting that investment into effect for our ratepayers. So trying to make sure that we're doing the necessary work in terms of going through the bonding process, putting different vendors, doing the pre-engineering like I mentioned earlier, and getting these various projects under contract so we can go out to bid and schedule them and do all these things so we can start work next spring. So I just want to make you all aware that that next meeting coming up on the 25th, there'll be a few different items regarding kind of those bonding projects coming up. If you all have questions or would like to talk about any of that in more detail between now and then, please let me know. As always, I'm trying to strike a balance between boring you all too much and also making sure you all feel like you're getting enough of the information. So if you would like more, please don't hesitate. I know Jay and I would be happy to sit down and talk with you, but just kind of stay tuned for that next meeting, a few different items related to that bonding process. But other than that, that's all I have for you this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Griffin? Councilmember, comments? Jared, let's start with you tonight.
Nothing for me. All right, you.
Paul?
Got nothing, man.
Thanks.
Three cheers to Theresa and the DDA for a great night Friday. I can't make all these events, you have so many, but wow! There were just a ton of people down there Friday and everybody seemed to be having fun. So it was very cool. Thank you so much for all the planning. Was that the first time we had a Ferris wheel?
First time we had the Ferris wheel over Chicago Drive.
Yeah.
So it's been out in Washington before. It was...
It was in a prominent place.
Yeah.
Yeah, it jumped out on the horizon, very cool. And Charlie, the road construction, I can't say enough, I am so happy we're putting money into this and I am driving on new roads and it's just awesome. So thank you for all the work.
You're welcome.
In reconstructing the roads. That's it.
Justin?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Steenstra. I didn't go to the summer street there because Aiden wanted to stay home, so I had to sit in the air conditioning with him, but my wife and daughter went and just had a blast and my wife said it was really hard to get Rihanna to leave because she was having so much fun, so... Well done for the DDA, as always. And then I just want to bring back up, I had mentioned one time before, perhaps looking at a Airbnb policy, particularly around the area of nuisances. I certainly believe in property rights and I don't want to come up with a very restrictive policy for Airbnbs, but one area I would like to explore is holding the property owner responsible for nuisances or having some buy-in from the property owner if there are nuisances that occur at an Airbnb. So just something if the rest of the council would be willing to entertain exploring. I'd just like to see something happen, so, thank you.
Josh?
Yeah, no, a couple things, I guess. Glad to see that there's going to be a meeting without doubt about the railroad crossing at Wilson and Chicago Drive. That's getting rough and so I'm glad that we're taking a look at that. I was also glad to see that the new signals were activated on a midnight late Friday at Wilson and Quarry. That's on Mike U in the morning and in the afternoon. And I was really excited to make a dedicated left-hand turn with a left-hand turn arrow today on the wall, so... It looks great. Signals are nice and bright and prominent and I think that's a good improvement, so... I think those dedicated left turn phases will make big difference. And be much safer, so I'm glad that we were able to pull it off and get that all done, even though it took a while for them to come turn them on, but they look good.
At least it's before school started.
Yeah, no, it's perfect, so they start, and Granville starts next week, isn't it, great?
Yeah.
So, yeah, great, so thank you.
Yeah, Theresa, great job, a lot of fun, nice and warm. You hit it out of the park every time. I mean, it's just amazing, it's fun, fun, fun event. I was helping Kyla in the Grandville Community Tree Project. I don't know whether I wanted any trees or bushes or not, but I did have fun. It was a lot of fun, it was a lot of fun. Also, got to go through a ribbon cutting within the last couple weeks of a physician assistant who has an office on Fairland. And I didn't know that PAs, Josh probably knows this, can, I mean, they operate under supervision or something with a physician, but they have like their own offices and own practice, so very, very interesting.
That was the primary care office over there?
What's that?
That was the primary care office over there?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's also...
Yeah, yeah. And then Griffin and I had a very nice meeting with Congresswoman Scotin's office and talked about things, it's nice to be on their radar and them coming to us and asking if there's anything they can do to help. We're not used to that, always not, sorry, but I could get really used to that, it's very nice.
We're okay.
That's all I've got, is there a motion to...
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
Support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you everybody for joining us tonight.